Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Brandon Sanders. I am here with PG News Incident Management Team. In response to the ongoing situation in Tulare Lake Basin, just wanted to give you a brief update this morning. Our priorities at the moment are making safe in areas where we have access. We have ban boats in place. Gain the access to primarily remove overhead equipment such as transformers and regulator banks so that they don't end up in the water. We're also responding to a number of locations where poles have slipped over and are floating. We're pulling those out as well just to make save. We're going to be here for quite a while. We're bringing in specialized equipment from Louisiana. It's going to allow us to safely remove a lot of that equipment. Again, we don't want to allow those transformers, for example, to end up in the lake and result in a discharge. That's not something we want to do in terms of, we are more focused on protecting the environment and safety and all of that. So anyways, I know I've spoken with a couple of you, but just wanted to make sure that you knew I was in town. I'll remain here until the job's done. The chairman and others have my contact information. Please reach out anytime if you have any questions. Thank you.
I have a question. What are we trying to get a ride in an airboat?
I'm working on that. I think the chairman had, we were on a corporate levy for the press conference, we talked about that. And I think there might be an opportunity maybe over the next week, once we have those larger bucket boats, I think there's a bit more to see.
I want to drive one.
These things are coming from Louisiana, sixteen foot beam, forty-five feet long. It's essentially a line, floating line truck.
Yeah.
So it should be pretty impressive to see. But again, we're just focused on removing the equipment that poses a risk to the environment, to the public. And we're certainly doing everything we can to support our customers. There are a number of them that have been de-energized for safety. Clearly, electricity and water don't play well together. So we're focused on make safe. We've got a large contingent of folks operating at our incident command post at the Moore Service Center on Enterprise Drive there in the industrial park. And we've got lay down yards and landing zones scattered throughout the affected area. One of the big items that we're going to be doing is reconducting a certain circuit to allow a backfeed, not an ALPOC, to bring more customers back into service, sort of traversing an area that's not going to tap it. So we're looking for every opportunity to support our customers. We understand the cost is very important. You know, the act producers need to have service to the maximum extent possible. So we're looking to do that. I haven't a chance to get it.
Thank you.
Thank you all, Eric.
The next speaker is Rosemary Ron.
Morning, Chairman, Supervisors. I just wanted to provide you an update on the ending of the COVID emergency. So on May eleventh, the federal emergency, which was April twenty eighth. And so at this point, we're just transitioning. There's a few things with transition for the emergency. There'll still be coverage till the fall for vaccinations and some testing, but eventually by the end of the year, all of those free testings will go away and it'll go back to people having to go through their medical profile. But I just want to provide you that everybody's end of the emergency, even the World Health Organization, on five five. Thank you.
What about the boosters? Are there still boosters?
Um, there is a recommendation for another bivalent booster for those sixty-five and over. So they are recommending a second booster. It's the same configuration as the one that was given in the fall, but they are recommending for those sixty-five and over to have a booster.
And what's the gap between?
Two months.
Two months, yeah? Very good thinking.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Hager.
Good morning, Madam President.
Um, I wanted to give the board an update on our personnel matters. Unfortunately, we lost the deputy district attorney to Riverside County. And to fill the calendar position that we left open, I had to divert a gang prosecutor from our gang prosecution unit so that we could fill normal. I've been working with the Superior Court and we're trying to find a way if we can change around the schedules so that we can more efficiently staff the forens. The court is open to it, but we don't have a solution yet. So again, I can't bore you guys enough that we need to move forward and start coming up with more competitive salaries as well as adjusting our job descriptions. I was unable to hire somebody in time to fill the position that was left open by the deputy who left. I attempted to hire somebody with twenty-five years of criminal experience. However, I was outbid by Stanislaus County. They offered her a salary of approximately twenty to forty thousand dollars per year. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last of the speakers. I have no written correspondence and no one on line appears to have their hand raised.
Anyone in the chambers like to make a schedule for movement? Say a night. Okay, moving forward. Thank you. Next item is two minutes, item A, the second, twenty twenty-three, cancel.
Before tip, no before election.
Thank you. Cancel. I have two minutes from the regular meeting for the second twenty twenty-third.
Oh, moved.
Thank you. June is second by the business.
Joe Nance?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verben?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard for the news.
Yes. This is five in favor. That takes us to the consent counter. There's a lot of items here. Under consent, if the board has had a chance to review them, no other questions, the chair will entertain them. There are no questions, there are comments, and we're moving forward. We got a motion by Robinson, second by Fagunda, and third by Clark. Please tell a word.
Joe Nance?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verben?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard for the news.
Consent calendar passes five in favor, then takes us to legway agenda items. First one comes to give the services aid. Like that's right.
Good morning. Honesty comment, Deputy Director, putting this face as agent ID. So, well, the morning chairman and members of the board. I miss that part scribbled, but I have it.
Morning. Just write that down next time.
That's it. I have it written down. That's the issue. I just get a little nervous. So what we are here today is to ask the board to consider adopting a resolution for claiming the month of May twenty twenty-three as foster care month in Kings County. And here with me today is Trish Schuber. She's a program manager for the child offer division. She's just going to give you just a brief presentation.
Morning.
Morning, Chairman.
Members of the board, Trish Schuber. So today, we just wanted to share with everybody that since nineteen eighty-eight, the nation has honored foster parents across the nation for the dedicated work that they do in the service that they provide to communities' children. They've done this by opening their hearts and homes to children of vulnerable ages, children who have experienced trauma. And we just wanted to align and every year come before you guys and just help spread the word of foster care throughout the month of May. We also wanted to provide you with just a little bit of data that helps share the impact that we see here in Kings County. In two thousand and twenty, or I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-two, Kings County received a total of two thousand and twenty-four reports of suspected child abuse and neglect to our hotline. Currently today, we are averaging approximately a hundred and forty-seven reports of suspected child abuse reports to our hotline. Currently today, we have three hundred and sixty-nine children in an out of home placement setting. Of that number, a hundred and fifty-six of them are placed with either a relative or a very close family friend. We have ninety-nine of those children placed in a community-based home. So those are our community members that opened up their hearts and homes to our communities' children. We just also wanted to share with the board that this Saturday, May twentieth, we are in partnership with Glad Titans Church, going to be honoring honoring them and celebrating with a breakfast celebration. And we just wanted to share with the board. So with that being said, as Monica had mentioned, we would just respectfully request that you would consider adopting the resolution by May twenty-third, or May two thousand twenty-three, foster parent appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Any comments from the board? A little bit presented. Now, second, second by Nance.
Joe Nance?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verben?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard for the news.
Yes. Thank you. I have passed five in favor. Item B, we have another five items from our board this morning.
Or Miss Barrett? Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first item, Commissioner Barrett, Chief Engineer, Department. The first item we have before your board this morning is a request to adopt a resolution for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four SB one funding. This is a resolution that the state requires that the board's department take before the board is to adopt the resolution, kind of laying out or listing the potential projects that will be done in that fiscal year. This is the seventh year that this funding has been available in the county, as I use set SB one funds to do roadwork and capitalization work within the county. The list that we are presenting as part of this resolution is essentially phase two of the item cutoff full debt year instruction project we have going. The current phase, which was approved last year, is currently in design, and this would allow us to start the second phase of the item cutoff. For demand. If there are any questions, there be happy.
Thank you. Was it do a traffic watch? You're going to go down one lane or?
Uh, yeah, so we've, the way we've essentially laid it out with a consultant for phase one and how to construct and we'll see if we need to adjust it. It would essentially imitate how we construct in each order, where the first portion of work would be divided in the shoulders, and then that would essentially allow a three-legged configuration, where K rail would divide, you would have trapping both sides while the competitors doing work on one of the.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? There are no questions or comments. I will be presented. Second, started by Robinson.
Nance?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verben?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard for the news.
Yes.
Really, it's a construction. Start A on that.
So for phase one, we have ninety-five percent plans. And so within a couple of months, that's a big one should be ready to go before the end of this.
Sir, item two.
The second item we have before your board this morning is a non-routine hazardous encroachment of the public roadway. This is an amendment to an existing agreement that the county has with Lake Side Pipeline and Moss Energy. On July twenty-eighth of twenty twenty, the board approved a non-hazardous, a negative, nonroutine encroachment permit allowing four point six miles of biodeath pipeline within the county roadway. The applicant has submitted a request to amend the agreement and additional mile along Kansas Avenue between the Fourth Avenue alignment and Fifth Avenue. The amendment to the contract will maintain all the situations of the current agreement, providing certain protections to the county, such as a liability insurance and irrevocable line of credit to remove the infringement that the county had as future date claims that is no longer where to keep it in the right way. So the request is a recommendation to accrue the agreement with Lake Side Pipeline to include the additional mile as amendment, and then the same two percent of the revenue would be a franchise fee to the county. So that would be a just.
Thanks, sir. Any questions or comments?
Make a motion. We'll approve it. Present it.
You have seconds. Motion by the man, started by Nance, clerk of the court, Paul Rowe.
Joe Nance?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verben?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard for the news.
Yes. Thank you. This is five in favor. Item three.
Item three, that we have before your board is an amendment to the Cleveland City Pedestrian Bridge Project. On March seventh of this year, your board awarded the Cleveland City Pedestrian Bridge Project for design to Mark Thomas. Since then, the consultant Mark Thomas has submitted a request for a subconsultant substitution, Feinfelder, which was submitted as his original geotechnical engineer, was not able to meet a term of their contract partners between the prime and the sub. Therefore, Mark Thomas submitted a request to sub out Feinfelder, Inc., and use Crawford and Associates as a geotechnical engineer for the project. The scope remains the same and the fee remains unchanged. So the only change in this amendment brings the original agreement, is subbing out a subconsultant that is being.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Be prosperous.
You know, I've spoken out against this project before. Basically, I appreciate all the efforts of Chairman Valley, I think his heart's in our space. We just, we see this a little bit different. You know, he sees the glass half full here. I see the glass half dead. I would like to stop the spending now and stop throwing good money after that. Even with the state's revised budget, there's still a thirty to thirty-five billion dollar deficit. And a lot of that has to do with the frivolous spending projects. I don't view the state's money as free. I just see it as another pocket for our citizens. Yes, we should be compassionate, and of course, we're looking for safety. But in my opinion, this is too much for too few. It's not efficient use of government funds. There are other ways to achieve safety for these children, including the Hawk Flack and Light System and an underpass that might be a hundred million dollars. So I agree with the last study by the grand jury. So thank you, Doug. Thank you for your effort. I think we all went out good.
Well, I just want to clarify, I'm seeing the last half, tenth year half full. I see more experienced kids running across Highway forty-one, trying to get school or trying to assist the community. And so that's why the work is done. And we have so much time invested in this project. This is simple, it's locked out. And so thank you for bringing that back, for continuing respectfully to move forward here. Any questions or comments? Chairman, Chairman.
So move it, Chair.
The most by Nance. Second by the members.
Joe Nance?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verben?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
No.
Richard for the news.
Yes. I pass this. Four in favor, one in opposition. Thank you. Would you like to turn your on with your?
Yes. Item number four, before the board, is a recommendation for installation of a multiway or allway stop sign at the intersection of Seventeenth Avenue and Eighth Avenue. Public Works Department staff, engineering, engineers on staff, inspector, through the receipt of a couple of complaints at the location, also checking the accident history for this intersection, from the couple of site visits. At first, the intersection had not met the MUTCD warrants for an allway stop. But recent events, recent events at the intersection have caused it to not meet the warrants based on the five collisions within a one-year span. Three of those collisions were injured. So staff, staff prepared the multiway stop warrant setting outlining all of the MTCs you're talking about, that were not managed, that were meant. And so the department concludes that the multiway stop signs are warranted at this intersection in order to alleviate some of the COVIDs that have happened at this location. And like I mentioned, number five collisions that were perfect all within the twelve-month period, and three of those were injuries. So we're hoping that by installing the allway stop, it reduces some of the concerns.
Thank you. Good work. Any questions or comments for the board?
So move it, Chair. Second.
Joe Nance?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verben?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard for the news.
Yes. This is five in favor. Thank you. On your last half. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dominic Sander, Public Works Director. I am before you this morning to request approval of a resolution for claiming May twenty-first through May twenty-seven of twenty twenty-three as National Public Works Week in Kings County. The American Public Works Association has been taking this opportunity to celebrate the hard work of men and women who did this field with all the course for over six decades. As with many other professions, disciplines, and vocations here at Kelly, everyone deserves their moment to shine in the spotlight. And next week is that of public works professionals. Public Works, representing at levels of government service, are responsible for the design, construction, maintenance, and operation of buildings, transportation facilities, sewer, water, county parks and grounds, equipment, editorial services, and fleet, all of which are vital and essential to serve the public. At this time, I respectfully request approval of the resolution before your board in order to memorialize the twelve deserved.
Any comments from the board? So move. Second, motion by Fagunda, second by the man. Just want to say thank you for the work that you have done, and the work that you do at the county level, the city levels, you guys do a lot of the city work, especially at events, the setup, the takedown, anything done. Good job, Tim. There is a lot required. It's a hard job. I'm very proud of each and every one. We're very fortunate and blessed here at the county. Our group of staff, and they're always ready and available, day or night, twenty-four seven, as many know. And I just can't say the positive things about the movement of this department. So thank you.
That account their director, too? Excellent, every group. Good work and work here. He was a director.
Good work, good work. As most excited event.
Joe Nance?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verben?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Richard for the news.
Yes. Yes. On Sheriff's Office, item three. Good morning, Chair.
Morning, Chairman. Back break for Assistant Sheriff, Peace Officer Sheriff's Office. I'm ready for the adoption of the resolution for Peace Officer Week. This officer supported it since the seventh of May. Tomorrow, we will have our ceremony at Kennedy House. You're all invited. This started in nineteen sixty-two at President Kennedy. And every year since, every sitting president has went along with it, followed this series. That's all we have.
And all more. Right under the flag. Okay. Smooth forward on this. Why, Madam President?
I'll make a motion adopting a resolution that's made May seventeenth as a peace officer, peace officer for world day.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barrett, second by Robinson, I'm clerk.
Joe Nance?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verben?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard for the news. Richard Pogus?
Yes.
Next item comes from administration, it's item D, we have two items.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Domingo Cruz, one of the administrative analysts of the administrative office. This morning, I'm requesting that your board approve the Second Amendment to the agreement with Chris Com Company for state legislator. Lobbying services from July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. So each year, the county contracts for state lobbying services. So on May fifth, twenty twenty, your board entered into an agreement with Chris Com Company for turn of July one, twenty twenty, June thirty, twenty twenty-one. So since then, the county has re, renewed the agreement for the past few years. So this amendment in front of you would continue lobby services with Chris Com for another year, concluding at June thirty, twenty twenty-four. So since July twenty twenty, the Chris Com Company have been assisting the county in assembling the county's annual state legislative platform by meeting with the departments and administration. They have kept administrative staff informed on current legislative matters during a weekly thirty-minute phone call meetings. Most recently, Chris Com were able to secure eight million dollars for a pedestrian bridge project in Kellman City. As of February of this year, Chris Com have started providing monthly legislative snapshots in a written monthly report versus the weekly phone calls. Also, they have been providing correspondence and bills and inquiry upon. And currently, they are working with leadership to secure funds for the Kings Community Action Organization, Food Bank, and the Incredibly Health Centers. So the county does anticipate going to request for proposals for lobbying services next contract period. And we also have Chris Com's president and CEO, Chuck DeGolian in the chamber. If you have questions, wait.
Real quick, you know, the word to conference there for K C O, that's because the board, that's still our one priority that that will be voted in for.
That's correct. That's for federal state, your one request that came through board earlier this year, those are the two items that will refer to Chris Com and Paragon.
Teaching on this morning, I see that all we have from L A. On that, were you done?
I would say, yeah. I respect your request that you brought up for the Second Amendment with the Chris Com Companies, the state like you saying, but yes, services from July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty.
You want us to cut down that thirty-minute phone call to fifteen minutes, that's a lot of time every week. Mister Joy, if we get going, I just want to put out there that I knew that we got a good thing going with Paragon and at the federal level, the board, we talked about four years or five years, we sent our staff to, for them to kick that around and put together along the term. It's based on partnership and moving forward and some stability and so I asked our C E O if we could bring it that way. He said, and I'm glad you did, recommended it pretty much for the board and see what the appetite is. So Mister Joy?
Sure. Okay, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's always hard to get up here and talk about yourself and your firm, it's kind of unglued, but you know, I do want to say that we've been part of this community for a long, long time. We just celebrated our twenty-sixth anniversary at our company. And COVID didn't get us, which is really terrific. We've worked about twenty of those years here in the county, the office here in the county, in the city of Port, we've been there about fifteen years in that office. I know I'm supposed to talk about what we're doing now, we do have a ten million dollar request for K C E O, it's a big dollar amount. Senator Hurtado was very adamant that this wanted to, she wanted to make this her top priority, so I don't think she has any other budget requests. I think originally, we were asking for about two million dollars. So you have to follow that carefully, we're working very hard, I know the, I've never seen a support from a lot of people in the community. Also, I just wanted to mention, we're here to, you know, fit in with the C E Os that jam that as far as phone calls, services, what we do, we're very flexible. We have done a lot of work in the county. I think we were loaned out about fifteen years ago to bring money back for the game of college cash wars. So we were working with the county and then Sheriff Jordan way back when. A couple of years ago, we were hired for a little while with the sheriff. And we were successful in assisting the sheriff and bringing that seven million dollars back for the sheriff's headquarters. Also, the sheriff had an issue, there were, there was some legislation that was going to, just one other quick example, we were going to have to hire a full-time vet for anytime somebody brings an animal in. And with salary benefits, the sheriff was saying that would cost about two hundred thousand dollars a year to do that. We jumped on that legislation and it's been held up ever since. So we do a lot of little things to help the county that we don't care about every day. We'd like more than a one-year term, it really turns out to be thirty days to thirty days, I mean, you can let us go in thirty days, we can let you go in thirty days. But it is nice to know that, you know, we're valued and that, you know, we would get more than one year than people now today again. Where, where, this is the county we represent, I think when Mr. Peterson was up there and Mr. Brubin in a few few, you know, we said we don't, we don't do work for any other counties, this, this is really an important place for us. So I'm here to happily answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, any questions you come from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, so. Two years ago, I think Superintendent Peterson, you know, he felt at the time it was to separate himself from other counties, because he looked for new money, a different direction. I was against it at that time, I felt we should be in the group with Paul Yoder. Paul Yoder had been very good to keep me informed of what's going on at the Capitol daily. And it included me in lots of stuff going on, including me with the governor of California. You know, I was, I felt that we should try something different, we did. We had an incident here last year in Indianland where I was kind of mistreated by our lobbyists and it took me some time to get over that. I'll be professional, but I don't think any more than a one-year contract has warranted it this time. I think with the Paragon, we get a weekly updates. When I interviewed four lobbyists at the State Capitol about three years ago with Rebecca Campbell, I met with a local one here, which was on the hallway, he was, you know, the lobbyist there, so I get a weekly update from that as well. I do not get a weekly update from Chris Com Company. So I think there's room for improvement. I'll go ahead and allow this to happen this year. But if it doesn't improve over the next twelve months, we'll go ahead and go for R P or new lobbyist.
May I make a comment to that?
Sure.
I find that kind of interesting, first of all, we take our direction from the chief administrative officer. So you want weekly reports, no one has ever asked us for weekly reports. If you do the math, the money that we assisted the county in bringing into this community, we've been paid about two hundred thousand dollars and we've got about sixteen, seventeen million dollars. It's about eighty to one in return for the investment.
I believe a lot of that was under the contract of the sheriff. The sheriff doesn't have, I mean, he has a own separate contract, not the contract we're talking about today.
Okay.
So I didn't ask the other lobbyists to send me weekly updates, they did on their own, they felt I should be informed. And I don't think I should ask you to send me weekly update either. If you want me to be informed, you'll see to it, I'll inform you. That's how I see it.
Any other, are you guys, say, problems?
So I'm in history with you, it sounds like you've done a splendid work. However, I was in Anaheim for that, it was that altercation. I did not see that it was a professional situation, it wasn't handled as well as it could have been. So I just hope you got a little bit better dialogue.
Okay, I, you know, we were talking about the pedestrian bridge. There were some emotions going on there. The way our firm views that is that Mr. Gill, that was one of the priorities of the board, we do not work on priorities that have not been established by the board of supervisors. And so, you know, I, it felt like we had some explaining to do and we did it in a very social environment, no one was in a suit and tie, we were all out there. And I thought I would have a very honest conversation with you like we're doing now in a public forum. So again, if there's a communication issue that Steph believes we have here, I am happy to address it.
Any other comments? Well, it's not pleasant by saying that, I do, I do believe that Chris Com Company is doing an outstanding job. I would say, any overlap and infirm or some of that, the way that Chris Com's been, and that's from the different communities that you represented in front of the building and reputation in Kings County, Door County ultimately. You know, and I think that this year, even with the deficit, we know there's still a lot of Minnesota, the administration's going to be counting on lobbyists with good relationships. Good relationships in that Capitol building that you have, with Mr. Lloyd and your company, which I believe to go out there and find the money, the money's going to be spread out in committees, so the strategy's going to be different over this year on going out there to find, to find money. I've seen you guys fail, yet what I do like about Chris Com is they represent this our county. You start talking about lobbyist base from the Saturday and you start talking about a whole lot of interest up there. To, and who they're delivering for, it's not, we have lobbyists who has us as a client to go there and deliver for us, not for any of the number of the fifty-eight counties there. And on the federal side, we're talking about all the states too, so look at that as a matter of fact, I'd say we look for a deliberate for across the country. Besides here in California, County of Kings, so I think that respectfully, I believe they deserve more than a one-year contract. Here's only a history, we gave it to our federal lobbyists. And we still see what we can to take this opportunity here this morning, so respect what's been said here. And when it comes to CSAC, there's a whole lot of shenanigans in CSAC that that's the kind of ones that I, you know, especially up here on this side, and it's saying, with that, let's just, let's just see where the appetite is on there, so at this point, as I understand, you're in favor of the one-year contract. This time, I'd just ask if there's a, any appetite from the board to bring this back to a few more years, to this contract between our lobbyists and the administration, so we can just clarify here and move forward, so is there any appetite from the board? Okay, so then at this time, we'll move forward with the direction of the board, it's a one-year contract.
The department needs to establish this agreement for a term of one year. And the board can move forward with that today.
So I'm saying what I can, I'll make the notion for a one-year contract.
Jeff seconds.
Second by, motion by the Alex, third by.
Joe Naps?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Ben Libin?
No.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Pogus?
Yes.
Okay, passes, one of the federal one position. Thank you to the board and thank you Chuck, you got some work to do, this challenge here, this year for everybody, so. And thank you, Don. Okay, let's move forward, there's a study session for the administration.
Good, social media.
What's on forum, social media platform?
Good morning, board members, the county public information office relies within the county initiative office. Social media has become a critical public resource that many access for latest news, information and updates, especially during, during an emergency event. In efforts to amplify our public information reach during emergency events like we are today, Kings County staff is launching official social media, Pro and Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. Due to the current vacancy at the C E O position, the P I O sources were contracted out as a sole service to be April twenty-fourth of this year as the county's currently stated emergency and the vacancy within the administration department was brutal. Currently, we have to ask the principals in their social media pages which have delayed sending official updates. And so at this time, I would like to introduce Justin Caparuso from Caparuso Communications.
Thank you, thank you, good morning, Chairman Vai, members of the board. Justin Caparuso, resident of Caparuso Communications. Happy to be here today and excited to move forward with the launch of your social media platforms. I just wanted to provide a little bit of background on myself and my firm. I have over twenty years of experience working within California's rural counties. Most specifically, most recently, working eight years with the rural county representative of California, or S R C R C, which you are now a member. I served as their vice president of external affairs for eight years. And during my time there, I really recognized the need for membership of these small rural, more rural counties and frontier counties to have public information services, most of them do not have the ability to have a full-time public information officer, to have a communication staff and that tends to leave out within the county administrator's office. So in two thousand twenty, thirteen days before the world shut down, I launched my consulting part and went into providing new services for rural counties. I'm happy to be here today in front of you as a compliant mind and firm, and we look forward to serving the public as well as we move forward with providing these public information services. Our philosophy is really to provide accurate, timely, and relevant public information. We really like to utilize all of the resources that are available to us, that's just why we are here today to launch these social media platforms. The social media platforms are a tool that we can use to elevate and amplify the existing communication channels that we have. So they do not take their place, for instance, of a website, they take their place in the other extra communications with media. They really serve as another opportunity for us to get crucial public information out, whether it be crisis or as you, as you know, since the three weeks since we've been on the team, you've had quite a bit of work in the county, I have a lot of things to be proud of. And so once we do officially launch these platforms, once you all launch these platforms today, we've already got a number of social posts that we've backlogged and ready to get going and to amplify the work that you tried to last three weeks. We also have a press release going out later today announcing the launch of the platforms and the answer that you all share as well. California's rural counties and frontier counties have unique challenges and I think that my experience and background of more than twenty years working within those spaces is really crucial when it comes to communications, especially during crisis and emergency situations. And as we've talked about earlier, the benefits of social media extend into that space as well. Social media has become, like or not, one of the sources that people go to most. And in times of crisis and emergency, they'll pick up their phone and they first go to Facebook, they first go to Instagram, they first go to Twitter, depending on the platform that they like. And so it's crucial that the county is involved in all three of those spaces. So with that, I think we have a slide that we can show that directs you to the three platforms and we'd love for, I know several of you are active on social media. And so we would love for you also to be the first to like the page before we officially launch it later today in Republic.
Are you sure Instagram's already live, because I saw that.
It's live.
Live, yeah, there's no post.
Oh, no post.
Right, no post, yes, we, we, we were live, Instagram does sound, yeah, I'm sure you have a follower, I think, but Facebook and Twitter right now. We did get a reporter calling us on Twitter, which was great, but yeah, Facebook, Instagram and Twitter, those are the URLs down there at the bottom, but if you look and search by the username, you should be able to pull up the Facebook page.
So we wanted to take this time to ask your board to pull out your phones if you had one to be the first to like it, but it seems like we've already got some followers who found this. We were trying to go a little bit further until today.
Yeah, I think Facebook, we have that opportunity, so yeah, it would be great if you did want to pull out your phones and like the Facebook page. And if you're watching officially later today, the public.
So Facebook is county or Kings?
County, yeah.
I would comment that in order to avoid a brown and violation.
Yeah, okay, here we go. Ring of B B's.
Can you make that your first post, county council, underlines more.
She's keeping you guys honest.
Good job, yes.
So with that, I'm, I'm taking any questions, but I do appreciate the opportunity to work with you and work to provide public information actually.
Hey, real quick though, the, on your Twitter, was, was Kings County, California taken? Is that why you have to be the number one?
Yeah, yes, there's a number of reasons why we have to. And we also want to keep consistency across the platforms as best we can.
I hate those things. It's hard to tell people what your handle is.
It's also a little challenging now because my previous clients, I was able to get blue checks and verify. And that's obviously not a thing anymore. So it's a, you know, it's a challenge when you're a public agency. But we'll, you know, we want to make sure that the people understand that this is a public.
It is on Instagram, you give us a blue check on Instagram, I can do my best stuff.
Super good. So a couple of years ago, I would have been against it. I think it's important to control your own news and have correct information out there. Over the last two or three years, a lot of the stories that have been heard in here from local media have been reported wrong. And it's hard to take that wrong information out of the public light. Once they hear it a certain way, that's what they believe. And I think it's important now to get ahead of it and get the correct information out to our constituents, to our community on time and in the proper manner. So this is a new way to do it. And like I said, three, four years ago, I probably didn't get it, that after seeing the bad information travel like wildfire, it's important to get good information out there. It's hard to get that pulled back from the community. So thank you, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, no, no, the only, yeah, the only comment to that too was that the, the hard copy newspaper publications are just not available anymore. And the digital world is what's available today. And I think this is a good step.
Should it is anything? So I was, yeah, I just want to, want to thank you for this. I've had constituents recently in your town, it was just so, particularly in regards to younger people. Because a lot of younger people, this is how, how they communicate, so. What I'm happy as well, I enjoyed the board in that. And yeah, I know it's time to be organized and it's official county. Don't want to send a picture to me without my approval. I'm sending my filters, I got my five. See program, he's very picky about his parents online as well, so.
You gotta stand.
Yeah, and now seriously though, I look at Monterey County supervisor, Luis, if he would, his Instagram page. He, he does a great job and I really, I follow him and I try to learn from the way he, his answers pose, especially with the media. If he's going to do something, he has them all right there. He's tagged on and there goes his press release, some spatter media advisory. Here locally, Nate, do you know Nate, Eric? He does the Kings County Sheriff Debbie's Facebook. We'll get with him, find a way to send some, some of his followers this way to help us with our. But that's your competition right there. You know, start getting more likes than him, we're gonna, we're gonna be back in six weeks. Seriously, that this, this is, this is.
And you bring up a good point, Chair. We are employing a strategy, you know, where we work with our partners to make sure that we have to play and share our posts. And the videos here for us, so that we cross-post a lot of the content and information, but they also help the official county page.
Should have been good, Chair.
13 departments have their own county Facebook page, so what we're doing is today, we're going to go ahead and let them know so they can share our posts. So that we can start getting followers because yes, you are correct, Chair has about 12,000 followers.
Oh, yeah.
Just checking on inmates.
Now, good job, this is going to be really recorded. See the numbers grow. And anybody else? All right. Chairman Tammy?
It's actually informational, so.
No, informational. Thank you. Good luck. All right. Now, I agree we go to a study session.
I have a top hat candidate on softie while we wait, but.
It's loading.
Okay, well, we're going to be secure members of the board, Matthew Boyett, Kings County Administration. So I'm before your board this morning to provide you with a study session of our county update to the Master Fee Schedule, which is the county's mechanism to charge groups or individuals that receive service here at the county of particular benefit to those groups or individuals. And the, the goal of the process is to ensure full cost recovery from the county. So that way, the individual departments, you know, don't bear any of those costs, kind of those services, right? So any cost that is not recovered by a particular department will fall to that department's funding strings. Some of which could be impacted general fund, some departments that are on the outside of the general fund are being passed to those individual funds there.
Are you going to do any front action from the board today?
No, no, today's just a study session. There will be the first and second reading of the ordinance all kicked off next week. And I'll, I'll go over that timeline of events at the end of this, so that way I can let your board know where we're going to go from here.
Let me slide you down.
I got a lot, but I'm, I'm going to go up here with the, I'm, I'm, I'm going to go pretty quickly because we all want to get out of here Friday at five. So you'll see on here that there's a lot of slides going over the increases. I'll go over those quickly because they're all primarily due to the increase in staffing costs that drive a lot of the services that are introduced here. So I'll just kind of highlight some of the categories in which they are in, so that way to respect everybody's time. So with that, next slide please. So I'll go over, like I said, the, the history of what the Master Fee Schedule is. Lets you know what the complete definitions are, the various fees, then like I said, the next steps and where we're going to head from here. So next slide, please. So the original Master Fee Schedule ordinance was adopted in 1993, in the month of April. And it is to be addressed every two years and the last update came before your board was in 2020. So again, as I mentioned before, it is very critical to achieve full cost recovery for those departments that are expending the resources to render these services for these groups and individuals. Next slide, please. So these are the fee types and definitions. I want to highlight the very first two on here, the new approval fee and the new fee. So the new approval fees are new fees that the departments are proposing to create in order to begin charging for those particular services. The new fees are existing services or existing fees that the county, the county department is currently charging for, but are not on the current Master Fee ordinance right now. And then we have your traditional fee deletions, increases, decreases, and then some of the mundane ones, title changes that don't impact the actual lease charge, but just the title of that particular fee. And then the one we all know and love, the fees with no changes at all. So we'll see some of those as well. Next slide, please. And this is a summary of all the fee updates, kind of a grand overview snapshot, so you can kind of see what categories are primarily impacted and what departments are primarily impacting those categories. So as you'll see, we have Assessor, the Community Development Agency, Fire, Health and Probation making up the vast majority of the changes that we will go over today. And again, you'll see the increases category with 230 proposed changes. Again, as I mentioned, that is largely going to be due across the board to increase in the staffing cost. So as the inputs increase, you know, that's going to impact these charges as well. So I have asked all representatives from these various departments to be present today in case there are any questions that I can't answer that you guys may have. They are available for questions or comments.
I knew how to put one of the health, sorry, 22 increases.
Yes.
Is that due to pandemic money going away?
Um, I don't believe so, but if you want to address that more clearly.
I respect ground public health. The majority of those fees are in environmental health and they aren't really related to.
To people.
And it's mostly staffing costs, travel costs.
Okay, so next slide, please. Oh, oh, sorry, I, oh, I believe I have something here, so. Um, so here we'll go over the new approval fees and just for the record, everything on all of these slides that I'm going to be going through have been published in your agenda pack as you have them all in front of you. It is also available for the folks online. So that, just, you know, as I go through this relatively quickly, all of this stuff has been posted or published and available and made to the public. So as you can see, one brand new fee that the Community Development Agency is proposing to bring forward is in regards to a relatively new ordinance to the county that was passed in regards to groundwater export permitting, but you'll see that there. Fire is proposing a few fees here. I know solar inspections are a big thing at the department now, so they're addressing that as far as the mobile food inspection permitting that they do. So as the health department here is proposing a new fee for their health improvement system as well. And sorry, let me back up just a minute. So you'll see any fee that's been changed will be highlighted in yellow. Any information that is new will be bolded in red and any information that is being deleted will have a strike through on it. So you'll, you'll see that here shortly. So those are the brand new fees that are not currently on the Master Fee Schedule that are being proposed to be made. And then these are the new fees that are currently charged by the departments, but have not made it on the Master Fee Schedule. So a lot of them, you'll see they're kind of document related. Fire, the fire incident report charge. And then the health department has a government rate for some of their birth and death certificates. That is a lower rate than their standard rate. And then some certain charges there for their COPO program. And then these are the fee deletions. So as we all know, the assessment is no longer doing the pathport fees. CDA is getting rid of the notice of exemption and determination fee there. And then Fire is getting rid of some of their fees, one of which is the ISO certification of the groundwater going to be doing. And then here, Health is getting rid of the, the car seat fees that they've charged for those services as where, as well as various fees related to the water analysis done by, I believe, environmental health, correct if I'm wrong, but yes. And next you'll see a lot for probation. Probation is actually deleting all of their fees that they have. And that is because there has been legislation passed that is prohibiting them from charging for fees that they have previously been able to charge for. So all of those are going away, which will be an expense for one from the department now. So now we'll get into the bulk of it here. And again, I, I will go through these slides relatively quickly, just for the sake of time. But these are the fee increases. You'll see here, off to the right, we'll see two columns. There's the current column for what is currently on Master Fee Schedule. And then you'll see a proposed column, which is what the proposed increase is. So we'll start with the Assessor here. Again, you know, a lot of stuff related to documentation in, in media, obtaining those things from the department. Here is on the clerk recorder side, you know, just regular recorder process and filing fees. Again, merit's license, maybe it's just been the same, things of that nature. Then here, again, we're continuing with the clerk recorder. Didn't go through, there we go. We're continuing with the, with the clerk recorder division here. You know, CEQA filing fees there and again, more digital media fees. Excuse me, I'm going to highlight one down here for your board. It is being updated for the findings of fact, the assessment of appeals. So it's kind of a dual change here. So you'll see this on the title change on a later slide. But this is also on the fee increase side because it is going regular, rather than the current $45 charge. There's going to be a $100 deposit upfront plus whatever the actual cost is of that service. So that's why you see that here. There we go. And next we'll get into community development. There are several fees here. Again, the vast majority of them, as with all of them, all type of salary. And I do want to point out one thing for your board. I was made aware of one fee by the department late last week that did not make it on the slideshow or in your packet. It's a check cancellation fee that the department is wishing to add. It will be a fee of $70. So if there's no opposition for your board, I can go ahead and make that addition, which will be part of the published agenda item packet with the first reading of the actual ordinance that will be coming before your board next week. So just wanted to put that out there, that it's not in this PowerPoint here, but if your board is, will allow it, I, I will add that fee for the department bringing back for the, for the reading of the ordinance next week. So if there's any opposition to that, I'm more than happy to, you know, proceed accordingly, so.
Let's real quick on the slide.
Yes, sir.
You look there, those are, it's like every single one of those has an increase. So we increase them just to increase or what, what's the main basis on the increase here?
So a lot of these increases, because again, we're dealing with staff, you know, actually rendering these services for these folks. And so, you know, the, the big driver in that is the staff's time. And as county staff have, you know, had merit increases for years of service or negotiated increases, those expenses have increased, which directly impacts the piece charts because again, we're going after full cost recovery of the department rendering those services to those individuals. And if there's anything I missed, Chuck, correct if I'm wrong, if there's anything outside.
So because an employee is leaving. This is work done in their office? This is work being done off?
This is work done in the office.
Okay, just so respect to annual employees. Just standing off the top of my head, I guess, just wanted to miss it, but the employees get paid that same amount of money to be there for that one hour. By the impact. Someone from the county who's asking for a permit to be charged more, who is unemployed guy.
So the permanent fees that are, and established are to pay for the cost of the employees who do the work for that specific project? So that the public's funds are not being used, being used for a private developers' project? So that the private developer that comes to us asking for a permit is paying for the projects?
Okay, and the only reason why I'm asking is because at the end, I'm going to ask from the board to ask you guys to consider before you bring this back, to take a look at it from the perspective of the flood event that's going on, right? And where a lot of people are already being impacted and by fire layering, sinister, I don't know, that's the state federal government. I'd like to make sure that when I'm posting increases on people, such as charities, and add people who are already underwater. Get to be underwater and having that stress on them already and increases, so.
If I could comment on that, so these fees are related to new projects. Farmers that farm in the county don't have a land use permit, they're permitted by rights, so there's no.
Talking about the overall schedule of the legislature anymore.
Okay, well, I can only speak to my section, but just to make that clear.
Thanks, Chair. Chuck.
So we'll go on to CDA continuum here. We have, you know, fees related to firearms permitting and land division processing. Next, fees are directly related to weapons act applications and building inspections for some of those that develops that Chair has mentioned just now. And then moving on to Fire, these are like fire marshal related fees, fire inspections. And then moving on to Fire. Um, these are like fire marshal related fees, uh fire inspections, permits, fines, things of that nature. Uh, many of these fees, in particularly Fire, um haven't been addressed in many years. Um, so that's why you might be seeing, you know, some of the uh large increases on uh some of these fees. So they're kind of um now that, you know, there's been some turnover with the fire marshal and now there's been some stability. Um, they're really um getting this up to to where it's a sustainable and on track with everything else. So um, that takes care of. Sure, I'm sorry.
Firearm test, one seventy, that was five hundred and nineteen dollars.
I do not believe so, no. We'll leave that as a title.
That that's in the business to go to the test of their business or something, President.
More in the building, fire, basically, Kings County, right? And most of these fees that you see up here um can be recurrent fees, but most of them are new construction. Um, we are solely behind in in our rates that we charge. Um, we need to come up with a plan if you hire additional inspectors. I don't think that one person can buy a vision for this whole town, and that includes all cities of corporate cities around it. So um, you know, a lot of these fees up here, we'll see have have some major increases, but they are allowable by Calquanta, I hope. Um, they have been uh they have been at our in our code of record for quite a long, long time. We just not just have not addressed the amount of time it takes to do these. So that is a big increase, I believe. But we also worry counties around this, uh while they were charging and uh reduced their amount. So we're not charging with the head joining counties, right? It's your authority. That's good. T. Prior did did most of this work, so I'll again comment too. Yeah, was there anything specific? I heard you mention the fire alarm. Um, that that includes um the plant review and they submit their classwork fire alarm. It takes several hours and then uh depends on the building relate. Uh, some of that, that's does not charge enough. That's kind of the average. Um, for example, the King's County offices out here are still not quite done. That's many hours of testing, every single detector, heat detector. So it does take a lot of time. Some of the larger projects, um, we factored in the I bring in an engine company with me because like Chief Lynch mentioned, and the oil inspector and some of these buildings are very large. It's all branded engine company with a captain and manager to assist. Um, they are um trained in building inspections as well. So more eyes on the project, we don't miss something. But yeah, we are still behind the average of the, I just pulled uh president's letter in the current county. He's got their fees together, so. Yeah, but this hasn't been updated in many years. It's kind of been inspected.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just have a kind of a technical question, I guess, with as as Chief uh Lynch pointed out, some of these fees are gonna be applied in cities of of contract. Um, do we also have to add those fees to their fee schedule? Or how do we, how do we interact with those contract for services communities?
Yeah, no, in our in our contract, we it's it's identified that we will represent that agency as the fire service. So whatever the county charges, they pass through. Sometimes they implement these force and and send it through us, but most times they deal directly with the chief of their office.
So how do we, how do we interact with the cities to make sure that that's um advertised through their system?
They they send them right to us. Like, yeah, somebody new construction or something, our business, they send them right to us.
Okay.
We we have our fee schedules published and stuff.
Part of that. Okay, so there there's a good link there?
Yeah, I think communication works at.
Very good. Yeah, no, good. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Um, this is the Health Department here. As uh both Mary pointed out earlier, you know, a lot of this is in the uh uh the Environmental Health Division. Um, again, you know, the primary reason um that you'll see the increases, again, it's all linked to uh the time spent and the 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 salary of the particular um classification of doing the work in here. So um, here in Environmental Health, you have various water program activities um that are proposing increases. And moving on, uh the these are all of your uh food safety programs, so your annual permits and your annual inspections um for those types of activities. Again, all done by Environmental Health. And then this is just a continuation of the food safety uh program service fees. You'll have things like re-inspections and consulting services, food handler training, stuff like that, um that is impacted here. And then next, um, this is still within Environmental Health, the solid waste program. So your dumping permits, um, you know, illegal uh enforcement charges, and then your medical waste program activities that they uh do out with fuel. And then here we have uh still continuing with Health, you're still nerve, excuse me, skilled nursing facility, annual fees and inspections. Um, also your tattoo and cosmetology facility inspections, um as well as your above and underground tank um programs and inspections. Continuing on into the environmental health, um you have your hazmat facility inventory, you know, commercial sites, ag sites, things of that nature. Uh hazmat response and remediation services from those um hazmat incidents. And then lastly, here on the last fee increase, the slide uh from Health, um you know, hotel inspections. And then ending it here with the library, just a couple of minor um edits here to uh increase the fees for their meeting rooms there in the library for those that wanna use little rooms. So next we'll move on to uh fee decreases. So there's a a couple here. So for assessor, there's a some stuff here for uh report generation services. And then these are the title change uh proposals. Uh, again, these don't uh increase or decrease a particular fee. This is just a title change to a particular fee. So again, as I mentioned earlier for your um on the fee increase slide for your board here, the fact and uh the finding of fact, assessment of appeals there. Um, adding the language to charge for the actual cost for county council to uh assist with that service at a charge of two hundred and four dollars per hour. So rather than it being the flat fee that it was in the past, it's gonna have an actual cost. So again, we saw this on the fee increase side for that, and now this is um denoting the title change there. Um, Department of Finance making a little clarification to their uh return check fee. So you need return check for property taxes. If uh, let's say, and correct me if I'm wrong, um if 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 there's a check uh with uh that is for multiple parcels, um it's not the return check fee for each individual parcel. Uh, there's a lesser bonus, you know, for each additional parcel on that uh particular um property taxes that are there. So. And then um just one, um, couple of minor changes here at Health. So for the final records, they're just deleting the word factor that are on their field certificate fee, and then they're on their miscellaneous fee, they're just adding the word per hour there at the end. So very minor. So the slide that we all love, the fee with no changes. So there are lots of fees that were not changed, that didn't need to be changed, that they were still sufficient to uh provide the service without causing undue harm to the department. Um, those are listed there. There were five hundred and eighty fees that we are not changing. So um DA, elections, public guardian, public works, and sheriff didn't have any changes to any of their fees. So as I mentioned earlier, these are the next proposed steps of uh what is anticipated to occur after today. So everything goes goes fine today. Um, I anticipate being back before your board on May twenty-third for a public hearing for uh this process as well as consideration for the first reading of the ordinance. Um, proper notice has been uh published in the hand of signal for that. Um, if all goes well on May twenty-third, I'll be back before your board June sixth, excuse me, June sixth, to consider the second reading of the ordinance and to consider uh adoption of the amended ordinance, which will then make the new master fee schedule effective thirty days after that, which will be July sixth. So with that, that concludes the study session. That's your answer to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Um, so is the proposed budget built on um soon of these increases uh moving forward?
Yes.
It is. Questions from the board? Yeah, one thing, um, the reason why I was asking the question is, um, I mean, one one thing that I would like to see personally, not saying that the board would want this, but I am pretty conservative on tax pair dollars. I have a fifteen-year record of uh so that that being said, these right here, a lot of these major increases, um, to me, since tax increase. And then if we were talking about a tax increase on the dais, we'd be a whole harder conversation. There'd be a lot of work that I just ran in. I can't start grabbing and writing. I must be, I must be wrong. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to to note the difference between a tax and fee. A tax would be for the people. These are actual cost recovery. This isn't above and beyond the cost of providing services, so they qualify as a fee.
I understand that. I that's why I said that. And then it's still an increase to the taxpayer, Kings County, in in those cases. And um those those increases, people don't care about them until they come here and then they complain. And then there's a box here that where the target on those increases. So they don't come here and say, well, you raised my fee. They just say, you're charged anymore. And so um looking at it from that perspective, would I see that um as we move forward on May twenty-third, whether that's the appropriate time that those department heads that are proposing the the largest fee increases, that they come to the podium and they go a little deeper than what you did and where you did a good job of it.
Is there?
That they get a little deeper why they absolutely requested these fees because because I want them to have the responsibility probably and ask for these persons um sitting at the seats and then we we vote in and we put all these increases to the end of the day, it's that comes back to us. I mean, sure. So please, uh, I mean, let me think about that. Boy, these department heads have been being collected on third. Those those are large increases, man. And whether or not it's okay that we haven't done it in a while. There's other things that we haven't done in a while here too, that that we still, that we're still on cash flow. That's uh that's uh those are large increases, or at least for me, fiscally from the way out there. Probably want, anyone have a comment? Two problems. At first glance, yeah, these did, you know, some seemed seemed, uh, you know, like the job today. But then after taking consideration later, of course, when we have like the highest minimum wage in the nation and it's linked to the consumer price attached, right? Just January first, again, fifty, fifty. And so when you start taking that as a baseline, then you start to understand how these fees and how everything work out, because there's all types of labor, and that's the beginning of labor. So that that's that's why I started understanding a little bit more about it. First glance, yeah, it did seem like. And then but then when you also take into consideration, some of them haven't addressed in a while. So thank you for your efforts.
My pleasure. And thanks to all the department heads and their staff as well that did a lot of work on that. So I appreciate all their efforts. So.
Thank you, Chris. Right? Everybody else for a move forward? You don't need any action today, right?
I just have one uh point of clarification if I can make, and please jump in as necessary. But um of the one fee from CDA that didn't make it in the presentation, that um does have the ability to be added to the first reading of the ordinance for the twenty-third. If if you're, you know, there's no objections to that, I can add that, or do you have any objection to that, or? Can I pull that question before you move?
Yeah, I have to say that the board, you know, I um you can it it can be added without any harm. It can completely be added because there has not been the first reading of the ordinance yet. So unless the board is jazz, I think Matt will go ahead and um add that fee as an appropriate fee. But if the board um doesn't like that, they can either strike it the day of, or they can generally give it a direction to make.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, your word. Board member announcements or reports. Any questions, Matt?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, continue to be engaged with the uh flood flooding issues uh throughout the county. Uh, attended the annual day prayer at the uh Heather Civic on the fourth. Um, first one since uh uh post pandemic. So uh the uh attendance was a little down compared to those uh pre uh pre pandemic. Uh, attended the uh Avonale old timers spaghetti dinner and and reconnected with the a lot of those old timers that were there for that side, the community. Uh, traveled corporate, participated in a judge on the regional four H program uh project competition. A lot of good uh competitors out there, a lot of good uh presenters. Um, the uh COVID did uh kind of uh affect many of those presentations. Uh, but a lot of these students are getting back. This is already the second uh in live uh performance and not on Zoom. And uh a lot improved quite a bit over the uh the the previous presentations. Um, also attended the West Hills College Paramedic Advisory Committee meeting uh that was held. We meet twice a year. Um, some of the uh post pandemic uh problems of getting a lot of those paramedics to the boards and getting them retrieved. Uh, it's it's much easier if you become a a student, graduate from the program, and then go take your test. Unfortunately, COVID has stretched that out. Sometimes there's a six or eight month uh delay. And uh so our past failed records have slipped a little bit. Uh, but we'll continue to uh request those students take those boards best as soon as they complete the program. Um, but it's getting uh a a little bit. Um, wanna certainly thank everyone that participated in the Kings County uh Employee Appreciation Lunch held last week. Uh, everything turned out very, very well. Uh, the crazy hat contest, the Fire Department, I think, brought in a lot of ringers. I'm not sure who who the creative person was on that site, but uh they certainly did a great job uh with that uh. Uh, but I certainly wanna thank all of the uh different departments that participated. I think that was a good good event uh as well. And thank you, everybody. Uh, supervisor for goodness, three weeks after a knee replacement, did a great job sitting down. He was there for breakfast, uh eggs to be uh by order. As long as your order was for scrambled eggs, you got eggs. And I certainly wanna thank him uh for that and uh and uh everything, I think, just everybody did a great job. So I wanna thank uh everyone for that. The next morning, we traveled out to the Kings County Office event for their staff appreciation, uh breakfast, uh different location, different time. Uh, but um worked worked out extremely well and certainly wanna thank uh the Office of Andy um and their their staff as well. Uh, wrapped up the two thousand twenty-three Lower High School softball announcing duties um on May tenth, and that that part uh is done. Attended the Carnegie Museum reception that was honoring uh Portuguese communities of uh Kings County in a nice presentation, nice uh uh some food and some uh, they're changing that presentation three times this year, this the second one. Um, and so it was, they did a real nice job. Um, attended the uh EOC briefing uh yesterday. Wanted to thank Gabe for uh uh continuing to uh handle those duties as well as all the staff that participate in those briefings. I think it's very, very important for everyone to get uh uh updated. And then uh yesterday, the Kings County Homeless Meeting uh continues to meet um and work on some of those issues. Uh, maybe a a a program coming up uh to us uh in the future to update our uh almost profile and almost um the next steps. Uh, kind of ties into the CAO uh Things Community Action uh project. Um, you know, but we will probably see that in the next uh month or two. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So while we're in it.
Well, first of all, I'd like to apologize to the committee for uh the barbecue committee for not uh being able to participate like as much as I, any more than what I did or did last. But maybe next year, we'll do a little bit better. And I really appreciate the work from the jail. I mean, she's face really done a job over there. Step forward, put this together, and it was really. Step forward, put this together, and it was really, it was a good meal, I, I didn't think that uh, uh, it was gonna go over like it did, as, as good as it did, it did uh, quick. Uh, everybody seemed to enjoy the changes, maybe we can just continue and make changes as we go along.
Well, good work, sir, and I need to apologize, you had a lot of years with a lot of barbecues you've done.
I like that, a lot of years.
Yeah, a lot of barbecues, and I, I know you've got a lot of sweat out there, you uh, you definitely done a lot of.
Well, participate, make it, that's what makes it go.
That's right, and there's an art to doing a scrambled egg, a lot of.
Yeah, it's cracking them.
All the shells go to the bus.
We didn't get a little fiber. Yeah, same thing here, I want to thank the barbecue committee, did a great job, and, and the jail staff, I was surprised, I was, that was pretty decent food, I mean, that's.
They're a professional culinary artist.
I know, but it was great, I would think uh, queso meats or donate the meat as well, I think that was awesome for the community to step up like that. Uh, following night, I attended the city county court meeting, and the discussion was on homelessness, and talked about the how to find the funding for the Good Bank Kitchen. Of course, going in there, I was accustomed by a homeless person that lived in the end, got threatened me a little bit, so. I honestly think that uh, we really need to get serious about this homeless uh, deal, we had about three hundred and fifteen homeless people about two years ago, now we're about four hundred and fifty. Uh, we need to enforce some of the laws and make them accountable, we have facilities that uh, we can give them the help they need, if they don't want the help they need, then we give the hell out of our community. I don't want to go to a restaurant at night and be forced not to go in there and be threatened to where I have to react to that uh, in my own community, so. We gotta get a handle on that too, so. And if my family issues go in right direction, so I'll be back to do more stuff, so, thank you.
Yeah, super good, superbowl's rocks. My only job at barbecue was hot or not, uh, I think I searched hot sauce that day, so thank you, you guys, give real punches. Uh, I spoke to Michelle Brown at length the other day, uh, for Donald Bell Main Street, he had heard of just their efforts in, in our community. And so just kind of a shout out to them, they, they bring thousands of people, they provide events for us. Uh, they have a four pillar system, which uh, does grants and a number of other things, beautification, but I just want to shout out. I don't know if uh, we always appreciate their function, uh, when I, I was part of, uh, we found work for that, and we, you know, we I think we, with fifty or a hundred people, used to come to Farmer's Market. So when you come from that perspective and see what it is today, uh, these type of employees. Um, last Wednesday through Friday, I attended the RCRC meetings, which are rural county representatives of California in Chico. And uh, we had an opportunity to view the uh, Oroville Dam, which is the second largest dam in the state of California. Give it some perspective, pine flats of a million cubic meter fee, and that's about four and a half. So uh, it's in pretty good shape these days, some people remember two thousand seventeen, and had a crack, and they had to, you know, I think uh, remove two hundred thousand people. Something like that, anyway, thanks for a good shape, got to see the spillway flow, that was nice to see. Uh, toured Goral Ranch to see they have a fish stream, ladder project, and the rice farmers up there are kind of working in conjunction uh, with the uh, with the fish guys to see the, the salmon uh, continue their spawning. Uh, and also had the, had the uh, the, the, the pleasure, but the humbling pleasure of seeing paradise uh, a number of years after the devastation from the campfire. Um, say they're probably about twenty-five percent restored, so they have a lot of work to do, but uh, but it's uh, it's, it's humbling to see a, all of their efforts and uh, and, and just uh, well, good to see that they're, uh, that they're in the right direction, but just, just a lot of roadblocks that they have to deal with. Uh, we have our, our home situation that Supervisor Verdo was talking about, and they, they have some of that as well. But they have to contend with those that are building trailers, because they're waiting for their, their residences to be, be built again. And then uh, and then the last day, uh, we listened to lobbyists, they go to the legislature and talk about the uh, the platforms, various platforms that uh, that RCRC possesses. Uh, yesterday, I was, I attended the Kings Taylor area, agency on aging, we call it KT Triple A, in Porcoran with Bobby Wharton. And uh, good thing all the Kings County senior centers are now open, and uh, we approved several grant contracts. This might be, good job, good job. Uh, I just want to close and just say a thank you to um, everyone working uh, on the flood issues, and especially what I think um, they ran the line to the, um, all the department heads that are um, spending that extra time and extra fees. Uh, at the EOC, I know that uh, they're not necessarily trying to go do that, they got put in a position, um, pretty scary time. A lot of peers for the work. Um, and uh, to draw the attention from the state, from uh, state emergency operation uh, services or DWR, and uh, all the way to the governor. So, good job everybody to, um, personally did that by themselves, and was uh, um, for the governor to come down, see firsthand the issues around County and in Porcoran, and then look at the funds, and try to get that out of the force, that's a big deal, and I just want, want to say a thank you. Thank you, Karia, for helping in public works, helping get the uh, press conference together uh, very quickly from last Friday morning, and make sure that public and sound system, all the little things like that. And I appreciate Karia giving the uh, organized updates on the press conference, because it helps a lot, and I don't count us from coming to say or repeat a lot of uh, things. And to friend the ways my group even know that, so, big deal, I just want to say thank you to everybody. And then as far as the uh, homeless issue. You know, when you start talking about what's going on there, um, I'm sure a lot of her, that was the quarter last week. That's a lot of work that that city council had to do to um, get their ordinance in the language, and they uh, they spent a lot of time, especially their council, to go look in language, what other cities have done that, give law enforcement the basis to go in there and um, and, and ask people to take down the A cam, that's why we can't just, you can't just go do that. And um, so I did, I did go out there with um, Corcoran PD and city officials last week, it's a Wednesday, I think it was Wednesday morning. And they cleared out the encampment in Chalmers Park, um, so I want to say again probably that. What I saw was um, patients, our Corcoran PD, the officials out there out there, I saw. Uh, you know, you gotta be compassionate to society too, though, so the public doesn't know a lot about what's going on out there. When you learn about what was going on out there, then you do get, because there's a lot of crimes going on there. You know, there was, there was a, one of the homeless people in the park who was strong-armed, all of the, all of the other homeless people in that park was charging them rent, seven, ten, in the park. And so when people don't know about that, and they, they sit there and they say, whoa, why didn't you guys go through and make everyone take down their tent that day? Which, that's just one thing that a lot of people, so. The CAO was out there, I appreciate, I appreciate them, there were some good people out there. Um, that's, I was out there at six AM, and it was very organized, it wasn't just going in with the bull horns, every one way, you got to take down your tent, you got twenty minutes to leave. They set up services and, and uh, and, can't, some people sort of shelter, you had, you know, shelter, health issues. There's a lot of work to leave, and I.
From the six.
I was at the six, I was the first one there.
Have you been to bed yet? Just kidding, yeah, I guess.
I left leg bottom about five minutes. Back in my eight mile jog, and um, let's the park, yeah. But uh, and it's a lot, it's a lot of work in uh, City of Corcoran. To, if you get in trouble, you don't do it, I think the council knows, that would be not so far enforcement, so. I mean, the price to live with them is if you die, is you dealt with the nine points of it dealt, and so you cushion that means the billions. What's that to further to, to do some problems, and it's not safe, so. With that, Karia.
Your board received a resolution on a matter of a conditional use permit regarding foster parents, that came before the Kings County Police Commission. And your board also received a notice of non-gaming land acquisition application from the US Department of the Interior, and that was received on the fourth, for upcoming events, the Kings County Sheriff's Office will be hosting a piece of the memorial ceremony taking place tomorrow, May seventeenth, at two AM in the Government Center Courtyard. Brave Sunset Unified School District will host its Mental Health and Wellness Resource Fair on Wednesday, May seventeenth, tomorrow from three to six at the Davenport Elementary. Hampton Chamber will also be hosting an annual women in business networking event tomorrow from six AM at the Planting House located downtown Hampton. The Kings County Senior Volunteer Fair is on Thursday, May eighteenth from nine thirty to AM at the KCAO main office here in Hampton. The Central Valley Blood Bank will be having their Bus Campus for Employee Blood Drive this Thursday from nine to one, signups are full, but anyone can walk up. Kings County Commission on Action will be hosting the fifth annual senior health fair on Friday, May twenty-sixth from nine to one AM at the Hampton Civic. There will be a free pancake breakfast from nine to ten. For upcoming agenda items, administration has twelve items, there will be a public hearing on the master fee, an approval and amendment for the Blue Shield Agreement. Presentation on the employee's reporter, severing different claims for damages, and a notice of non-gaming for land acquisition application. Behavioral Health has consideration to adopt a resolution for sober grab nights, CDA has three items in regards to the cabin element update. require having items for approval for purchase of nine image cameras. Public Health has appointments to the Kings County Ambulance Commission, and Public Works has two items and an invitation and a notice to award the contractor for the boardroom improvement project, and that's it.
Thank you, appreciate that. So with that, I believe that takes us to uh, the most session, or is that another items? Let's talk about the dinner, so we'll turn to Tuesday night, twenty-third, twenty twenty-third. Okay, turn with your time.
Just a fair occasion, we can come at eleven AM.
We have two uh, eleven AM, half point, call five, it's four, and alcohol for the answer.